There we go. This meeting will be recorded, so we'll post this on the town website and on the town's YouTube channel for folks to watch or re-watch later. We'll try to have it up by the end of this week. For folks that wish to make a comment at some point, there are two ways that you can indicate that you'd like to do so. One is to use the raise hand function. The other is to send me a message via the chat. The chat is currently set, so participants can chat with the host, i.e. myself. When you do make a comment, please be sure to state your name and your address or affiliation for the record. And lastly, if for whatever reason this meeting gets interrupted in a way that we're not able to carry on with the business, we will end the meeting, send out new instructions for joining, and carry on from there. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. And as a reminder, we ask anyone who is not, when they're not participating in the meeting, except for the council members, could you please silence, mute your video? Because it's very distracting, and we've had a number of requests, so thank you very much for doing that. Our first item of business is the council president election. And we just had a new term starting recently. And the term of the current president has expired, and now it's time to to elect or re-elect another president. So I am opening the floor for nominations for president of Somerset Town Council. Councilmember Rovak.
I nominate Steve Circo, and he's wearing a tie tonight, and so it's perfect.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, council president Circo, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the support.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. So I guess you've been nominated, and I'm considering that to be a motion that was seconded. So is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Thank you very much. And council president Circo, do you wish to make an inaugural address or say a few words at this time?
Just want to say thank you very much to my fellow council members for all their support and hard work and helping me along as I've just tried to tried to keep us focused on the town's business. Thank you very much. I look forward to another year. Also, I look forward to discussing, you know, things like formal or informal term limits for the council presidents at one of our upcoming work sessions, just looking ahead to the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next agenda item is our public comment period. If you wish to make a comment or ask a question, any resident or guests, please message our town manager.
There's no comments coming in at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the agenda.
It's your second. Bar and Circo, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Circo, Bar, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, is unanimous. We will now move to the non-consent agenda. The first item is a public hearing regarding 5510 Greystone Street. So we will begin the public hearing. Today is June 6, 2022. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for application 22-6-6A to consider a building permit submitted by Garrett Levin and Virginia Frazier to enclose the existing carport and existing front porch into a garage and foyer, respectively, at the home located at 5510 Greystone Street. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings, submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Following that, the council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to turn it right over to our town building engineering consultant, Mr. Doug Lohmeyer.
Good evening. The application proposes to remove the existing carport on the left front side of the house and add a one-story addition in its place. They also propose to remove the existing front porch and add a one-story enclosed foyer at the front. County issued their permit on May 19. The application included a site plan, a boundary survey, and a parking plan. Established building line analysis indicated the EBL along Greystone Street is 26.9 feet. Site plan proposed, site plan shows proposed enclosed carport and enclosed foyer will be located 35.8 feet from the property line. Boundary survey indicated existing house is 9.9 feet from the left side property line and nine feet from the right side property line. Enclosed carport will also set back 9.9 feet from the left side property line. Post setbacks meet the town's minimum setback requirements. The plans indicate the proposed improvement will cover 4,494 square feet or 20% of the lot. Does only less than 400 feet were being disturbed. The county did not require a settlement control plan and a drainage plan. Recommend the council approve the application for the demolition permit, a dumpster permit, and a building permit for 5510 Greystone Street with the condition that a certified wall check survey be provided. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. That concludes the staff reports, correct?
Dr. Feather is also here. There is a tree protection plan. And I believe one tree that will have to be removed because of the the construction as well. Tollbird, I think you're here, right?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So there is one arboretum, seven inches in diameter, that needs to be removed because it's growing right on to the carport that it's going to be enclosed. And so the bonding is, one tree is $500, and I'm suggesting a ornamental or evergreen tree as a replacement because there's, there was already canopy trees on the lot. And that concludes that part. As far as the tree protection, we're protecting the two street trees and the neighbor's tree at 5508. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. That concludes all the staff reports, correct, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, the applicant has an opportunity to present an opening statement and/or present their application and/or comment on the staff reports. And could the applicant and any of their representatives please now identify themselves? Thank you, and proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Slavin. Garrett Levin, homeowner of 5510 Greystone, joined by our architect and builder with Paul Geiser with Landis, who just raised his hand over there. And I think will will present the application for us if that's if that's acceptable.
Yeah, so again, this is a small addition. We are doing work underneath the existing roof line. We're taking the existing front porch and enclosing that under the existing roof line. We're adding what previously was an unenclosed porch and creating living space out of that. Similarly, to the left of that, we're taking a open carport and enclosing those walls under the same roof. So we're not increasing the footprint at all. We are removing a small tree. We do have some interior work as well that's shown on our plan, and that does include adding a window in the right rear corner. We'll be putting scaffolding up on the right rear corner to get to that brick opening as it's a walkout basement, and we have to get up to the second level. That's in the master bedroom, and there's some masonry work there. I, we do have our county permit. I concur with the presentation by Doug Lohmeyer. I do have a question for the council, though. If the, if the county is not requiring a wall check, is a certified wall check still required by the Town of Somerset?
This is, this is the opportunity to present your, your application.
It's a, it's a answer, question and answers. Okay, okay, that's fine. So again, has the council had a chance to review the existing and proposed plans?
Well, at this point, you just need to present, or they have, all the information's been submitted to them, and today
Yeah, Paul.
Have an opportunity to ask questions.
I, the, the, all of the materials that you submitted were also submitted for the council to review ahead of the meeting.
Okay, so I assume everybody has reviewed the plans. Are there any questions about the plans and the scope of work or our process?
Well, the council will be asking questions after you have concluded your presentation, which you've already, you've already, if that concludes your presentation, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that the plans have been submitted. I have reviewed this with Doug, and it's a very, to me, it's a very simple project. We will take care of the tree protection as required. And we have shown the required area for dumpster and for porta john and for parking in the front. So again, it's a very simple project, not increasing the footprint at all. And so we're requesting approval based on the drawings submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Mr. Levin, is that conclude your presentation?
I conclude our presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Council president Circo, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you applicants. I do have some questions. I'd like to clarify some items actually in the town report. I think there's some confusion about the size of the improvement. Item 10 in the town's report says the plans indicate the proposed improvements will cover 4,494 square feet or 20% of the lot. I believe that that 4,494 square feet refers to a typo in your plans where you indicate that the lot size is 4,494 square feet, whereas the drawing indicates that the lot size is 8,494 square feet. Is that correct?
So the lot sizing is in fact 8,494 square feet.
Okay. And where the town says will cover, the proposed improvements will cover 4,494 square feet, that is not correct, right? Because if, if it's covering that much, it'd be like more than 50% of the lot.
That's, that's correct. So we are, we are adding no more lot coverage than is currently covered by a roof at this point. So it's, it is, the lot coverage is not clearly half of the existing lot.
Right. Great. I just wanted to clarify that sort of, make sure I understood it correctly for the record.
Yeah, my apologies.
I, I think this is a modest renovation, and I think it fits well with the within town of Somerset, but there's an issue, a potential issue I think we need to dig into, and that's setbacks. And I might need the town engineer and our town lawyer to provide support. The, the town regulations require a minimum setback of 10 feet on one side and eight feet on the other side, and a minimum total of 18 feet between the two sides. And the town, the county grandfather's renovations on old houses, but the town does not. And what I'm seeing this plan is we have a house that's going to be nine feet on one side and 9.88 feet on the other side, which does not comply with our town code. Do you have any comments?
I, so our town code actually, in, in practice, that is usually what we see. But our town code actually only specifies that one side needs to be eight feet, and the sum needs to be 18 feet. So in this case, the nine and nine plus satisfies the side setback requirement.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bar, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, this is a modest change and does not enlarge the footprint of the house. The, you've covered all the relevant aspects and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to ask a question or make a comment?
No, there were no submitted comments related to this project and no, no indication that anybody wishes to make a comment this evening.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed, and I will turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations and the final decision.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think this is a modest renovation that fits with the town character. Let's just go around, see if anybody has any issues or concerns. Start with Shannon.
I don't have any concerns.
Okay, Debbie?
She's not here.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Kevir?
None.
Okay, Robin?
No concerns.
This is very fast, okay. So we're ready to move on to a motion?
Did you want to make the motion, Mr. President? Mr. Councilor Bar, do you want to make it?
Yeah, I move that we approve the application for 5510 Greystone to enclose the carport and foyer. We will require wall checks as indicated in Mr. Lohmeyer's report.
Mr. Town Attorney, is that vaguely and technically sufficient?
I believe you would also want to include in your motion the conditions recommended by the town arborist.
Thank you, yes, all right. And the condition, the replacement of the arbori, viti tree with an ornamental tree and enclosing all trees as specified by the arborist.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I saw Circo first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you to the Levin household. Congratulations. Now we will have a public hearing on 5502 Greystone Street.
I did have a question.
Yes, sir. Did you have, did you have a question?
Maybe just a follow-up. So typically, a wall check.
Sir, sir, in the interest of time, you can ask the town manager about that, and he can clarify that.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your participation tonight.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will begin. Today is June 6, 2022. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for application 22-6-6B to consider a building permit submitted by Seth and Jill Cohen to construct, in addition to the front of these existing home located on the property at 5502 Greystone Street. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Third, Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period shall be completed and the record closed. After that, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin the hearing with the staff findings, Mr. Town Manager.
Yep, and I will once again just turn it right over to the town's building engineering consultant, Doug Lohmeyer.
The applicant has submitted a building permit application to add in addition on the right front of the existing house at 5502 Greystone Street. Proposed addition will be 279 square feet, and the roof peak will be 23 feet high. He also proposed some interior improvements and a new flagstone entrance patio with a 42-inch-high screening fence at the edge of the patio. The county issued their permit on May 10. The area of the lot is 84, 8,494 square feet or two tenths of an acre. The proposed building coverage will be 1,901 square feet or 22% of the lot. The application included a boundary survey, a dumpsters on-site, and a parking plan. The established building line analysis indicated the EBL for Greystone Street is 28.1 feet. According to the boundary survey, the existing house is located 34.6 feet from the front property line, 12.4 feet from the left side property line, and 6.4 feet from the right side property line. Proposed addition will be located 28.1 feet from the front property line. There are two offsets along the existing right wall of the house, and the proposed addition will align with the existing wall at the front and will be located nine feet from the right side property line. Because of that, all of the setbacks will comply with the town code. Recommend the council approve the applicant's demolition permit, building permit, dumpster permit, and fence permit with the condition that a certified wall check be provided as soon as the condition is enclosed. That concludes my report.
Does that conclude all the staff reports, Mr. Town Manager?
We also have tree replacement and tree protection recommendations from Dr. Feather.
Actually, this property has no tree removals. And the tree protection is to protect the, the town tree and a tree, a dogwood in their yard, and then another dogwood in the neighbor's yard at 5504. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. I, I do note that we are running more than 20 minutes ahead of schedule, so are the Coens? Is everyone in your, in your, on your team available now, so you can? Okay, wonderful. So we will now have the applicant's opening statement and/or presentation of their application and/or comments on the staff reports. So thank you, and remember to please identify yourselves and anyone in your team. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jill Cohen. This is Seth Cohen. We have our builder, Tony Seraphino, on from Property Alchemist, and he can present the application.
Great, thank you, Jill. This is Tony Seraphino. So this is a front addition within the EBL to the existing single-family residence. The front addition is on the right-hand side, primarily center and right-hand side as you face the residents from Greystone Street. It's going to include a new, newly expanded and remodeled kitchen, a mudroom, laundry, and a powder room. The total new square footage is less than 500 square feet. We completely agree with the town engineer's staff report and are available if anybody should have questions about the project.
Okay, thank, thank you. That concludes your presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Council, president Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
One, one question. You are somewhat increasing the built surface, the impermeable surface by, with this addition. Have you thought about any ways that you're going to mitigate the additional stormwater runoff that that will generate?
So typically, sorry, you want to go ahead first, Sergeant?
No, Tony, you can take this one.
Yeah, certainly we'll take the advice of the town engineer, should he have any on that particular matter. All of our projects that we conduct now in and around Northwest DC and Montgomery County, we involve a stormwater management company to come out during the construction of the building envelope to provide recommendations as to, I would say, modern and appropriate stormwater management for the property. We did this over, for instance, on Trench Street about a year and a half ago. Whatever recommendations they provide, we pass along to the homeowner and implement. I don't believe the submission we provided to the town has a specific stormwater management plan, but that is our standard operating procedure for additions and new construction.
Thank you, that's helpful. And we actually don't have, in our code at the moment, any guidance as to a required stormwater plan for this kind of size addition, so just a question, thanks.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rovak.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
No, there are no submitted comments for this proposal and no indication of any comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we will now, this concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law, and they vote on the application. Now I will turn it over to our council president to lead the deliberations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I think this is a modest renovation that fits within the size and character of the street and the town. And I appreciate councilmember Bar pointing out the slight increase in the footprint, which I think highlights the need for us to explore the impact of renovations as we consider updating the code for stormwater management. But for now, I'm very comfortable with this. We're going in a different order. Kevir?
No questions.
Okay, Shannon?
I'm good, I agree.
Okay, Robin?
No, I was actually pleased by the answer to the question on stormwater. I'm glad that the company is, is looking at it within our areas, so.
Right, so with that, Councilmember, ready to make a motion?
Somebody else this time.
Councilmember Kumar, you, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah. My motion that we approve. Just pulling up the agenda. Building permit application submitted by Seth Cohen for an addition to the front of the existing home located on the property at 5528 Greystone, along with conditions as set by town engineer and town arborist.
Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Which is correct. It's 5502 Greystone, actually.
5502 Greystone, yes.
Thank you for that. Is there a second?
A second.
I saw Circo first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
All of us of us. Thank you, and thank you to the Coens. Congratulations. So I know that we are 45 minutes ahead of schedule, and I would like to find out if the, everyone on the team for 5613 Warwick is available, and I, I do see at least one resident who I know had a comment, but is there, Mr. Town Manager, is there anyone else that, that had indicated in advance?
Not in advance of the meeting, no. We have, I think, the Atkins here and the Laskies who had submitted some comments are also, have also joined us already, so.
So council, are you comfortable moving forward? Or, or do you wish to weigh a little bit?
Well, I feel like the, the Laskies wanted to make it. Were they gonna be on the call tonight?
They, they're, have actually joined us already, so they're here with us. Yep.
So you all, is the council comfortable moving forward?
I, I just wondered, can we do the the town arborist and the building administrator reports?
Okay, yeah. Why don't we, okay, okay, good idea. Let's move to the, let's start with the building administrators' report.
Doug is still available.
I think. For the building administrative report, a few items to go over. At 4719 Cumberland Avenue, they submitted an application to remove the existing deck at the rear of the house. We've requested additional information from the applicant for that permit. 4808 Cumberland Avenue, they submitted an application for building to commit, make improvements to the rear of the existing house. The town issued their building permit on May 4th. Work has not begun yet, I don't believe. At 4719 Essex, they submitted an application to add two additions to the rear existing house. Again, we've requested additional information from the applicant. And at 5506 Trent Street, they submitted an application to remove the existing house and construct a new house. Council approved the building permit on April 4th. The town issued a building permit on May 13th. No work has begun on that project as of today. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, President Circo, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Doug. I was curious about 5506 Trent. But it, but it sounds like they're, they're moving along. Thank you. No, no other questions are coming.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr. Do you have any questions?
It's just, Doug, are you concerned at all that they haven't started work yet at 5506 Trent, or is it just a reasonable time? We lost Doug.
Sorry, a future question?
Yeah, are you concerned that they haven't started work yet at 5506 Trent, or is that, is it still a reasonable time for them to not have started?
No, I'm not concerned. And before they actually begin work, you have to set up a, a meeting with the sediment control inspector, and might be that he's not available, or, so that, that's normal.
Okay, thanks.
But we'll have a pre-construction meeting before they begin.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kumar. Do you have any questions?
None.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ravak.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. So before we move to the tree removal item, let me ask the town manager if any resident had indicated in advance of the meeting that they were, wished to comment or had a concern about any of the tree removals?
Nobody had indicated as such to me. I, I'm not anticipating any comments.
Okay, and I believe that I'm going to turn over, I'm going to, I'll call the item, and I understand that the town arborist has an addition. But, so the item is a public hearing motion to consider approval of the removal of the following town trees as recommended by the town arborist. A swamp white oak at 4516 Dorset, and ash at 4701 Fallstone, a red oak at 4721 Essex, a white oak at 4823 Dorset, a pin oak at 5615 Warwick Place, and a pin oak at 4809 Grantham Avenue. Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Mayor. The swamp white oak is dead, and it's also small. We, something we planted last fall. We're gonna try again there, replace it next fall. The ash on Fallstone is 85 to 90% dead. The red oak on Essex is, Essex is the one leaning into the street, and it's 50% dead. The white oak is a large white oak down Dorset at 4823 that we've been pruning dead wood off for several years, and now it looks like it's compromised on the sidewalk side of the roots. It's starting to get hollow, and also there's a lot of large dead wood in the tree, so I think it's time to go ahead and take that one out. The other one is a, a larger pin oak at 5615 Warwick Place. That also has the main leader is dead in the tree, and it's in decline, and also has, is evidence of compromised at the root base, at the base of the trunk. 4809, I didn't get on the list. I'll send the report through this week. Grantham, it's a pin oak, 16 inches in diameter, and it's also 50% dead with large dead pieces of wood in it, and it's hazardous. That concludes my explanations for the.
So, so you're requesting, you're, you're requesting a pin oak at 4809 Grantham?
Yes, I am. I forgot to put that on, and I'd looked at that tree several weeks ago, or two weeks ago, at the request of the resident.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
The ash tree that is almost dead, do we know if that's the victim of the Emerald Ash Borer?
I, I think it's a combination. If, if you've all have seen that tree, it's kind of pruned halfway down already. I think that was from Ash Borer. So the Ash Borer probably contributed significantly to the demise of that tree.
I understand that. I mean, if we've got other ash trees, I understand there's a treatment for the Emerald Ash Borer now. Could we do that proactively on other ash trees that we have, or does that make sense?
Wait, I don't, I can't think of any ash trees offhand unless they're in the woods that are on the street right now. I haven't been doing the treatment in any other municipality. It's a trunk injection or a root flare injection with an insecticide. And the, the way I see it, it's, if you have something that's persistent like that, it's better just to wait out when you take down the tree and plant a new tree that doesn't have that problem. Otherwise, you're, I mean, you're on kind of a merry-go-round year after year treating the ash tree.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Matt, when did you inform the residents that these trees will be removed, could be removed?
For these, we included them in the announcement, but have not individually reached out to the homeowners.
Doug Kumar, we are gonna, we do post each tree a week before removal.
Posted where?
On the tree. I've been doing that the past several.
I think we brought this up at a working session. Residents need to know that you're planning to remove trees, you know, they are part of their front yards or side yards. They need to be aware when you're planning to do this. It could be disruptive to their life. Obviously, most residents would welcome removal of dead trees or.
I did discuss with two of the residents, the ash on 4701 Fallstone and the pin oak at 5615.
Okay, well, I would, it would be great. It would be great if you could do the others as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ravak.
I was just wondering, do we, does the town plant trees, like when these trees come down?
Oh, yeah. The spaces are filled the next planting season.
Oh, okay. Great. No other questions?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from any resident or guest?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Take your time.
Motion to approve removal of the four, of the, of five town trees as recommended by the town arborist, condition on updating residents at those sites.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Also, the 4809 Grantham, please. So there's, there's six.
Six, okay, all right. Motion to approve removal of six town trees recommended by town arborist on the condition that he and the town manager update, there is, you know, town residents at those sites.
Thank you. Is there a second? I saw Circo first. So just to clarify, the, this agenda that we have in front of us with the six trees, isn't that the one that was published in advance?
The five were published in advance. I, I, when I printed it off for you, I added the six one for toll, just, just so you were aware of it.
Okay, so, so.
That's not.
That's our Kumar, that's what.
That sounds good enough.
Is that why Councilmember Kumar, then you're, you, you want to make sure that specifically for that tree, that there's a notice? That you wanted for, but in your motion is the notice? And, and just for the sake of the staff, what, what is your intent of the notice? What, what did you want that to be?
We, we brought it up a number of times in the working session, the last council, and that residents need to be informed, and I think just straightforward email.
So you're gonna write an email?
Yeah, because people are paying attention to.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that because, so that's part of the, officially part of the motion.
Want me to specify then the motion? I just didn't want.
No, no, that's fine. No, that's fine. I, I think as long as he understands, because you have the words in, in the motion.
Great.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to the public hearing for 5613 Warwick Place. Today is June 6, 2022. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for application to consider a building permit submitted by Daniel Bremer Wordick and Rebecca Lamadrid for the construction of a retaining wall and the removal of five trees located on the property at 5613 Warwick Place. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Following that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, before I turn it over, I just wanted to remind the council that the reason this is going before the council has to do with our town's new tree code. The retaining wall under normal circumstances would be able to be approved administratively, but given that it's all together, we're presenting you with a holistic proposal from the applicant. And again, just, just because we're dealing with some, something of a, a new code, I just wanted to quickly go through the section of our code 182-7, the criteria for permit decisions. The following aggravating and mitigating factors shall be considered in approving or disapproving an application for permit. So the first is aggravating factors weighing against removal. One is the desirability of preserving any tree because of age, species, size, or outstanding qualities such as uniqueness, rarity, or status as a landmark or species specimen. Two is the extent to which the immediate area and the town in general would be subject to environmental degradation due to the removal of trees, but not limited to stormwater management concerns. And three is the number of trees removed from the subject property within the prior five-year period, which I'll note is zero prior to this application. And then the second is mitigating factors weighing in favor of removal. One, whether the disease, a tree rather, is diseased, incest-infected or injured beyond restoration. Two, if the tree is in danger of falling, presents a threat of injury to life or property. Three, the hardship or unusual practical difficulty which the applicant may suffer if a permit for the action is not issued. Four, the extent to which a tree is, and removal is necessary to achieve proposed development, redevelopment, land use, utility construction or utility maintenance, and the extent to which there's no reasonable alternative. And five, the extent to which any replanting plan proposed by the applicant involves planting native canopy trees, planting trees that are at least two and a half inches in diameter at the time of installation. C, conservation landscaping, and D, rain gardens or other stormwater drainage measures to address stormwater management concerns. As I said, just wanted to run through that quickly for you. I also sent it to the council, just as a reminder, since the language has been changed recently. With that, I will turn it over to the town's building engineering consultant, Doug Lowmeyer, who has a report regarding the proposed retaining wall.
The applicant submitted that permit applications remove three existing trees and to construct three retaining walls with. Uh, the applicant submitted that permit applications remove three existing trees and to construct three retaining walls with steps at the left side of the first wall in the backyard at fifty six thirteen Warwick Place. Montgomery County issued their permit on April twenty fifth. County offices weigh the stormwater sediment control plan and permit. However, it appears the project will be moving more than a hundred cubic yards of soil, which would require at least a Montgomery County small and disturbance permit. Uh, I did call the county reviewer who reviewed the plan. Unfortunately, he's on vacation. But I did speak to somebody there who pulled out the plan, and they also agree that it appears that the project is disturbing more than a hundred square feet of uh moving more than hundred, a hundred cubic feet of soil. So at least a small and disturbance permit uh would be required. They're also proposing work uh very close to the Little Falls branch at the back of the house. I recommend the council approve the construction of the three retaining walls of fifty six thirteen Warwick Place, subject to approval of the tree removal under the following conditions. Applicants shall submit a confirmation from Montgomery County Department permitting services that no sediment control permit is required and that less than a hundred cubic feet of soil will be disturbed. The applicant, number two, the applicant shall submit confirmation from the county as to whether or not the project impacts the flood plain at Little Falls Branch. And number three, the applicant and the contractor must ensure that the wall construction will not encroach onto adjacent properties. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Are there, does that conclude the complete staff report, Mr. Town Manager?
Nope. Next is um Dr. Feather with uh his tree reports.
Um, the applicant asked for removal of uh three tulip poplar trees, eighteen thirty six and forty inch in diameter. Uh, when I went to look at the site, I found five trees that need permits. Ones of fifteen inch black gum. There's two Norway maples, uh six inch each on the uh north side of the property. A tulip poplar kind of in the middle of the slope at the thirty two inch diameter uh at breast height, and there's a large forty eight inch tulip poplar at the base on the, on the town side of the property line. Um, the um the thirty two inch, the, the maples and black gum are in good health. The thirty two inch uh tulip poplar has some dying branches, but can be preserved. And if it was a street tree, I would prune out the dead and, and keep the tree. Uh, the tulip poplar forty eight inch has a large um dead, dead um branch or almost a trunk uh kind of uh leaning over the property. And that can also be removed. Um, that's something the town would do. And since it's a town tree, and to make the tree safe. Um, so the, the bonding requirements would be um twenty five hundred dollars, five hundred a tree for five trees. And I'm suggesting to replant five canopy trees as a reforestation plan. It was kind of hard to take photographs of these. I have it in my report. I kind of took it from the front of the house and some of the interior. And um then I also have a tree protection plan. The applicant applied for an addition earlier. Um, so I, I use the same tree protection plan. It's for the addition. And that concludes uh my report.
Is that, that concludes the complete staff report? Right.
Yep, that's the staffer for you.
Thank you. Okay, so uh Mr. Bremer Wordick and Ms. La Madrid, I, now is your turn to present your application and or make an opening statement and or comment on the staff report. And please uh remember to introduce yourselves and anyone else on your team. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor, for um um making space in the agenda for our permit today. Uh, joining me and uh on the camera is my wife Rebecca. Um, and you can call me Daniel and Rebecca uh directly. You don't, no need for complicated last names. Also joining the call are um Ed Bees um from Denchfield Landscaping. Um, they're the lead on the retaining walls. And also on the call are Sandra Sabroski and Edwin and Dino from Four Brothers Construction, who are working on the larger project. Opening statement, uh I would just mention that um the work that needs to happen in the back, uh in the back of the house, in the backyard of the house uh for the retaining walls. Uh, we see this project as a critical project regardless of the addition. Um, because of the uh reports that have been submitted to us by the engineers and experts uh that have determined that the slope in the back is imminent to fail. And so um it's just important to keep that in mind as we move forward with um this discussion. I'll also mention that we have had uh tree troubles on our slope before, and this was about four years ago, um in the middle of uh the settlement process when we were purchasing this property. And a large tree from the neighboring property of five, six, one, one um fell down and uh created substantial damage to the property uh to our property. Well, it wasn't our property yet. But it uh, it had the um potential impact of, of putting the, the um the transaction um in jeopardy. Um, a cantilevered uh balcony was stripped and uh significant damage was done to the roofs. And we don't know the causes for this um for, for this large tree falling, but it had a significant impact on our property. And so um um just something to also keep in mind that there have been um issues that have, have taken place in and around the slope due to um the, the, the state of the trees and the slope. I'll also say, um as you might recall from our last hearing um last month, um we, we, we are deeply in love uh with Somerset. We're deeply in love with our property. Uh, when we were looking for houses, um we were looking for a move-in ready uh location. And uh this house was not a move-in ready location, um but we decided to move in here because it had two features that my wife were looking for, was looking for, which was green, lots of green, lots of nature, and uh mitsur and cherry modern look. And so it is our goal to preserve those two things that drove us um to look for, to, to look extensively um to find this place and, and find it, thankfully. Um, I'll also mention that um unbeknownst to us, uh we've been working on the landscaping plan, I would say probably for three years, but unbeknownst to us, um the, the codes that the town has adopted, we were already incorporating some of these features in our plans. Um, so the main project, if, if, when we move forward, if and when we move forward, the addition includes rain barrels for stain water managers, uh uh stormwater management. And we were also um prioritizing the use of nat- natural and uh native plants uh to, to, to this area. So um so both water conserv- uh stormwater conservation, uh stormwater management and conservation gardening are things that were top of mind for us, um even before the town passed these regulations. And um while the plan is not in front of you, reforestation of, you know, we are losing, we would be losing beautiful trees that beautify our, our view and our, and our garden. Um, and so we are keen on making sure that we replace those trees with canopy trees and trees that are native and that contribute to Somerset's um tree city spirits. Okay, um so Ed, if you would like to take it from here, just to uh maybe proactively address some of the concerns that have been brought forward by um five, six, eleven Warwick Place, Mr. and Mrs. Lasky?
Uh, my name is Ed Bessesi. I live at forty eight oh six Guilford Road in College Park. I'm a landscape architect. I'm number six two seven registered landscape architects in the state of Maryland. Um, Denchfield, I work with Denchfield Landscaping. We were hired to design a landscape for the property. Uh, and in our backyard, the backyard, we had a very modest goal of installing a small retaining wall that would allow us to level out some of the backyard for usable space. During the course of designing the building addition, Dan Rahm of Piedmont Geotechnical was called into the project to make a slope, slope stability analysis. His analysis said that the slope was stable to do the addition for the house, but he had a dire prediction that if the slope was not treated, that the rear yard of the house would slough off into Little Branch Falls. Little Falls Branch, sorry. Um which uh switched our gears to asking Dan Rahm to design a segmental retaining wall. And he came up with a very clear and um concise design force of three segmental walls. Imagine when these are constructed, that we will be hand digging trenches where the segmental material will have a foundation on the original grade before the house was built and before the developer filled the backyard with, with um available soil. Um, for the most part, the grade is going to stay where it is, um with the exception of we're going to create a flat or a more level terrace between the highest wall and the middle level wall. Um, so it's difficult to read from our plan exact, and from the engineer's drawings, exactly what the plan is um or how the plan is going to affect the property. But it's going to be relatively little disturbance for what the, what construction is going to go on. Uh, one thing that's going to happen to us, and this gets us to the, to the five trees. And I wanted to ask Tolbert Feather if he would agree with me on two of the trees. Uh, the critical root zone, the area that you do not want to disturb when you're working around trees, and in particular tulip poplars, which are sensitive to construction, extends all the way to the back of the house, and that overlaps for all three of the trees, the forty eight inch tulip poplar, the thirty two inch tulip poplar, and the eighteen inch black gum. They all sort of occupy the same area with their roots. My optimism is that we could leave the two six inch Norway maples in place during construction and see if they survive. Daniel and Rebecca are happy to plant canopy, native canopy trees. Uh, we're actually happy to, to comply with whatever requirements that the Town of Somerset has for us. Um, I've been with Daniel and Rebecca working on this project for three years. Uh, I, I'm personally involved in wanting to see it get done and done right. Um, and I'll imitate uh Doug Lowmire and say that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh to the applicants, are you, does that complete your presentation?
Uh, I'll just ask um if there is uh, uh, you know, i- if, if the Laskys are indeed participating and put it forward uh some of their concerns, or if the town council will be reading them.
Well, well. If there's an opportunity for us to respond to them. Well, the councilors can ask that question, but.
You will have an opportunity to rebut.
Yeah, you're okay. That, that was a question. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. Council President Circa.
Sorry, but before we move on, just I want to make sure that Sandra Edwin, is there anything uh that Four Brothers would like to add um to the report before it moves on?
Oh, yeah, of course.
I didn't have anything. Sandra, do you have anything?
I do. I think, I think Ed um summarized it pretty well. Um, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Great. Thank you both. Okay, thank you, sir. Council, President Circa, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm, I've got a question, a couple of questions about the retaining walls. Um, one thing is the disturbance of the soil in the, in the, in this project. Uh, so does the applicant believe this will impact more than or less than one hundred cubic feet of soil? And I ask because the, the town report sort of talks about both sides of it, but if it's over a hundred cubic feet, we would need us a county sediment control permit.
And, and has the answer to that?
That, I, I believe that's a question to me. Montgomery County asks you to do a disturb, uh disturbance plan if you disturb more than one hundred cubic yards of soil. Our calculation is ninety eight point eight cubic yards of disturbed soil. I get that by uh met drawing the slope and the retaining wall in section. At the most dramatic section of disturbed area, we have eighty nine square feet. That's a sixty foot wide wall, which I divided this disturbed area in half because from the center, the retaining walls uh die off or tailor back into the slope. So there'll be virtually no disturbance at the left and right side, and the major disturbance is at the center. And we come up with ninety eight point eight cubic yards disturbed.
Um, so there seems, thank you very much. There seems to be a small discrepancy uh between what you said and what our town engineer reported. He indicated that, Doug, are you there? Your report says that a county sediment control permit is required um at a threshold of a hundred cubic feet, not a hundred cubic yards.
Yeah, uh, I don't have any numbers exact on it, but if the work area is forty, forty feet by seventy feet, that's uh thirty one hundred and fifty cubic, uh square feet. And if they're putting a foot of dirt over that area, that it ends up to be a hundred and fifteen cubic yards. And it appears that they're adding more soil behind those walls than a foot, so rough numbers that I ran indicated that were over a hundred cubic yards. And the county, when they looked at it, they uh concurred that it appeared to be more than a hundred cubic yards. So recommendation was that they go back to the county and have the county check it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that clarification, Doug. So the report should indicate we're talking about a hundred cubic yards.
I think, yeah, I, I think I had missed, I, I think I, when I uh was editing that, I had mistakenly wrote, written feet, so I apologize.
That's, that's fine. Just want to make sure we're all aligned. Um uh that is, because the other question I have is looking at the cross-section of the walls, and in particular the lower wall. Uh, this is for the applicant, how, the applicant's architect, how tall is that wall? I'm just wondering.
And I agree, it's confusing because the slope pitches in multiple directions. At the tallest part of the lowest wall, we have eight foot, six inches of wall showing for about ten feet across.
Okay, do, do we need any sort of um fencing to, so that people don't fall off the edge?
There are handrails planned for any place that the wall is taller than two foot five.
Okay, thank you very much. I just didn't see that in the plans, but I have a tough time with some of these plans.
And this one is particularly graphic.
Um, okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I want to get back to why the um backyard was an imminent danger of subsiding and collapsing into Little Falls Branch. Um what I'm trying to get at is how is the runoff from the roof currently handled? Was that contributing to the um weakening of the uh structure with the soil um in the backyard?
According to the, to Piedmont Geochemical's slope stability study, the soil that makes up the backyard at the residence was never installed correctly in the nineteen fifties. So it was loose soil sitting on top of a stable slope. Uh, his, or, or Dan Rahm's observation was if the slope was overloaded, the whole of the backyard would slide down.
Okay, so it, it would basically goes back to poor installation in the nineteen fifties, that.
Right, and if I may add, uh, Councilman.
May add, Councilmember Bar, just, we have just anecdotal. Evidence of how, you know, with settlement, all the, the yard, the yard front and back are sloping towards the house. Because there isn't adequate storm, just rainwater management. We have a downspout on the front of the house that empties out onto the carport. And it's contributed to just the whole carport area settling. It's also visible, that's very visible. Via the, the, the roof line of the house, you will see the right hand side of the house is actually. Has been affected because it has settled more than other areas because of the downspout. You have the same issue in the back where you have two downspouts, one on the left side and one on the right side. And actually on the right side, on the left side, you have everything that's coming from the street. And between the two houses as well as a downspout on the left side. And that's contributing to a lot of erosion on, on the slope on the left side. And on the right, you just have, you have one downspout that is also. Pushing out a lot of water. You can also see evidence of settlement of about two to three inches in, in the back. So, and then when we have really strong water, really strong rain, we have water filtering up. Through the floors and the basement on the street side of the house. So all of these, you know, we're trying to address and fix all of these things with the addition, the rainwater barrels and all these things. But we have to get started with the, the retaining walls in the back.
If I could just jump into, I, I would like to add that one of the reasons why we were investigating. Having a retain wall to begin with is when we were looking at. Doing the addition of the house, we had our structural engineer inspect the rear of the home. And so there is cracking in the masonry on the bottom level of the house. And our structural engineer said that he felt like it was probably due to soil erosion in the back. And that's what prompted us to have the soil engineer to begin with. So that's. I just wanted to add, thank.
Second different question that relates to the Laskies concern. Explain why you think the protection for their property is sufficient the way you've designed it.
Councilmember Bar, I will let the experts in the house respond to that question. Ed, if you want to respond to that and then. Ed and Sandra, Edwin and Sandra, if there's anything else that you'd like to add to that. This is not my field of expertise.
We plan to install construction protection fences between the two properties on the level ground between thirty. Fifty six thirteen and fifty six eleven. The neighbor has. Sent us a note that they're worried that his, that their air conditioner and windows in their low windows. Will be damaged by construction. I think that construction fencing, construction protection fencing will keep those areas safe. And any place that the site tips down, we're going to install a super silt fence. Which should keep all of loose sediment on the property.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
I had a couple of questions for the town. Team. Want to clarify, we are, we are just looking at a tree removal application. We're talking about. The retaining walls because they are implicated in the tree removal application. Is that right?
Yeah, the, and the town attorney might be able to, to help me clarify that, but I, I think the town has established. A practice in the past that when an application. By, by some criteria is triggered to have to go before the council. That the council looks at the entire application, including elements that on their own would be able to be approved administratively.
That's correct. Retaining walls, retaining walls or any walls aren't allowed to be. I'm sorry, any walls aren't allowed to be higher than six and a half feet unless they're retaining walls. And they're only as high as necessary to retain the grade.
Got it, got it. And then Matt. In terms of, you know, for the tree removal, the, thanks for highlighting the updated code and. And the sort of aggravating and mitigating factors. Then we as council need to weigh in making a call here. One of the aspects is sort of the number of trees removed from the subject property within the five, prior five year period. Do you have any data on that?
Yeah, and Tolbert, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we looked into this and there, there have been no tree removal applications. On this property in the last five years.
Great, and then. In terms of sort of what I understood from Tolbert's report, there's nothing. Unique or rare or no qualifying outstanding qualities of these trees.
I will defer to Dr. Feather on that one.
I would just say size, but tulip poplars are common in the, in the woods, so there's nothing. There's, you know, nothing particular about the species and black gum we have too. In Norway maple, we had two. So I'd just say the size of two tulip poplars would be the only. You know, outstanding character maybe.
Got it, got it. And then, thank you. And then for the, for the applicant. And team, one of the conditions we have is in favor of removal. In the code is the extent to which the tree removal is necessary to achieve proposed. Development redevelopment, land use, utility construction or utility maintain. And to the extent to which there's no reasonable alternative. And I think from what I'm hearing is the retaining walls. Are needed because of the condition of the backyard, which is based on historic treatment of the soil. And because we have the retaining walls, that is resulting in the tree removal. Is that correct? Is my understanding that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then I just wanted to clarify because I think you went by quickly. But you are planning to plant native canopy trees. You are doing stormwater drainage measures. And you are developing a broader landscape plan that has all of these components.
That is correct.
Great, thank you. No more questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rova.
Um, so I was just wondering, cause like with the, the size of those trees. You know, obviously one of the. Functions of large trees like that is to contain stormwater management or, you know, to help with runoff. And so if those trees are taken out, that can really change like that landscape of stormwater runoff. That combined with like the retaining wall. Is there a danger that, that the stormwater runoff will impact the houses on the sides of you?
Ed, I think you are better qualified to answer this question specifically.
Looking at the plan, we're not changing the. We're not changing the grading at either the left or the right property line. If anything, we're slowing the water down by creating the spaces behind the retaining walls. And by directing the roof runoff to splash areas at the bottom of the slope.
And so like the area where. There's that air conditioning unit that is like relatively, like pretty close to the side where that wall comes through.
Yes.
There's, you don't think that there will be more water like funneling down from the street and then away from five, six, thirteen. Towards five, six, eleven?
No, there shouldn't be any increase in water towards fifty six, eleven. We're not adding any impervious area except for the top of the wall.
And, um. Okay, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ten Manager, has any resident or guest wish? Speak on this here, during this hearing?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, yes, uh, I do note that I had included a comment. Submitted by the Laskies for the council. The Laskies are here to join us and have indicated that they wish to make a comment. So. Mister and Mrs. Lasky, I will pin you and go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, fine, thank you. I, I trust and hope that, that everyone received the detailed. Memo that we distributed to you yesterday and have had a chance to look at that. I would like to know if any member of the councils have not had a chance to look at that.
The council received it, thank you.
So. We have several issues we still want to deal with, and I should note that the, we are all for the. Our neighbors' project and wishing the very best with it and do not want to obstruct it. However, as we noted. There are some issues that affect us and even affect the town. And I think some of those have been dealt with already in the discussion. I don't need to go into.
And we appreciate them.
And also this evening, Daniel. Distributed to us by email and also I know to all members of the town, some supplemental material that. Attempts to address some of our concerns, and I think he must have really, he and. Ed must have been in quite a scramble today to, to try and get that material done and we greatly appreciate that. And all kudos to you and thank you. However, specifically with regard to the barrier wall. That's agreeing to put up between the, if I refer, you all have the pictures that I included, I assume. The hard, in the hard copy. And you can see that what's being talked about on the four picture page. The top right corner pretty much illustrates what's going on. Or the two top pictures with the, the. Steep slope towards downwards from front to back and how narrow the space is between the properties due to the fact that. At the time these. Houses were built, there was only a seven foot setback requirement, so only fourteen feet between how wall to wall. And only eleven feet to the air conditioner. That barrier wall, we appreciate, but I see in the today's notes, a suggestion that it'd be four feet high. I double checked the measurements out there this evening before the meeting. Four feet would not be adequate, it would not protect the air conditioning or the windows. A six, at least a six foot high barrier wall would be required to do that job, so. Ed, please take note of that. Note of that. I have a question, the, the, the new plan to show the silt fence descending along. The property line between the houses or alongside the stairway. I'm curious as to how the silk fence and the barrier wall would interplay with each other. Which would be where? That could need some further attention. Then the question has to do with.
Do you want, do you want them to answer that question and who are you addressing it to?
Yes, if you, if you want to go ahead and answer that question now.
We can certainly install a six foot tall protection, construction protection fence. The construction fence would go between your houses where the ground is level. And the super silt fence would go where the slope goes downhill.
The ground isn't level anywhere between the houses.
Relatively level.
Okay, well, from the. From the stairs on down to the back of the house at fifty six thirteen and ours is much the same. It needs to, the, the fence needs to. Run from the stairway on down.
Okay.
And we could deal with that later as long as we have the assurance that the appropriate fence is going to be built. That meets our needs. The question about the, the silk fence, not only between the houses. But down the property line, down the slope. I think you mentioned a super silt fence was a term. Is that the steel link with the plastic?
Any length fence and landscape fabric?
Landscape fabric or heavy plastic sheeting?
I believe it's landscape fabric.
Okay, because landscape fabric can be gossamer thin as well as somewhat thicker, but.
Well, it's, there's a standard detail for it. You don't want to trap the water. You want the water to be able to go through. You want to trap the sediment.
Okay, I do, I, I want to point out that the. You can see the second picture I sent, which was this back area from our side. The slope on our side, it's amazing the difference between the properties. The slope on our side is relatively mild. And as you know, it's exceedingly steep on the, on the fifty six thirteen side, so. The flushing of water down there. Both from construction and other things will be severe. And in that regard, I'd like to direct your attention to, on my detailed memo from yesterday. Under what's called. Issue, issue one, item, sub item three. Said there was a box on the building permit regarding the drainage inspection, pre-construction meeting, but that box was not checked as a requirement of the building permit. And I'm wondering why not?
I, I think I can answer that. The, the applicants aren't applying for a building permit at this point. So, so presumably at, at, at some point, once they finish the process with Montgomery County. They are going to come back to the, to the town for a building permit, but I think. But I think the applicants had expressed that this, this project is independent of the actual.
Okay, okay, fine, great. Then issue number two on my memo. About the construction of the retaining walls. Sub item two, on the plans, the retaining walls appeared to cross over the side yard setback space. And my question there in the memo, and I'm repeating. Is the new grading at the side and the new wall set in such a way it works to meet the existing grading on our property in a suitable way?
Yes, there's no plan to change the grade along the property line.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. The. And then.
How the trees are going to be removed?
The, I, I noticed in the latest supplement from, from Dan that he sent to all of us this evening. At five thirtyish that proposing to remove the trees by hand. But doesn't say. How that would go, and as I pointed out in my memo. About fifteen years ago, we had a hundred foot red oak and assembly located on our rear slope. That was showing disease and preemptively prophylactically needed to be taken down. And the only way that it could be achieved was. The, it was taken down by hand, but it required a considerable amount of equipment still to be brought in from the swimming pool through the park. And up into our back area and. And, and then the stump grinder brought in that way and they had to. Use equipment to clear space in there and as I've expressed to Dan some weeks ago, the concern that. Whether that is going to be required for these three or five trees, even if they're being taken down by hand. Which that is an issue of great concern to the town if they have to come through the park.
The plan is to take the trees down by hand. Cut them into pieces that are manageable and carried up out onto the street.
Okay.
That's usually that's fine on the upper portions, but the, like the lower thirty or forty feet of trunk usually are cut into like. Ten foot section, gigantic ten foot sections, and it'd be very hard to bring up the step area between the houses.
Well, but we appreciate the fact that you're going to do it by hand. Thank you.
Yes, but that, but that isn't fully addressing the question of how it gets done yet. Yes, but that, but that isn't fully addressing the question of how it gets done yet.
You're telling me that there's a usual way to do it, and I'm telling you, we're going to do it by hand, cut the trunks into manageable pieces and carry them out.
Well.
We may need a mini skip loader, which is a relatively narrow. I don't even know what to call it, tool.
Thank you very much.
Final item relating to the supplements Dan submitted today on the parking plan. Understandably trying to avoid parking problems on the street, proposing to try and have equipment parking in the driveway. And I, again, some weeks ago raised the concern that very heavy equipment can pose problems for the, the old driveways here, including the, because it happened to us when we had to have a crane brought in to remove a tree that fell on our house. The crane managed to pop off the retaining wall on the south side of our driveway. So I would be concerned that the parking plan have a caveat about excessively large or heavy equipment not being put right in that space.
Edwin, you, you prepared the parking plan. Would you mind just sharing the details of why it was prepared, the way it was prepared?
Sure. Mr. Lasky, it was only prepared that way. I have a note about the construction vehicles being in the driveway because the town code stipulates that you have to try to use the driveway first before putting any parking on the street. But it was basically only intended for standard trade people, the vehicle is just transportation to get to and from the job site, not necessarily heavy equipment. But we're more than happy to make that change and add the note onto the plans that no heavy machinery.
I just wanted to be sure everyone involved in the, the construction people were aware of the hazards with that brick retaining wall and how, how fragile it can be susceptible to, to things. Okay, so I think we have covered our concerns. Again, thank you, Dan, for what you did today and the supplements. I, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape here on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. And Mrs. Lasky. Now, given the length of the testimony by the Laskys, do the applicants have any rebuttal that they would like to present?
Ed, Sandra, Edwin, if you have anything else to add?
I do not.
I do not.
I think we clarified the point, but I just wanted to make sure that the Laskys are aware that the steel fence that they were requiring on the plans you're requesting is the super silk fence that Ed has noted on the site plan. And that was all that I had to add.
And I, I believe we've also agreed to increasing the height of the wall to ameliorate the concerns of the Laskys from four feet to six feet. And all other concerns have been either responded to via email and written form with plans and descriptions and as well in oral during this testimony. So we believe we have satisfied the requirements of those questions.
Okay, thank you for your rebuttal and for addressing those issues. So at this time, the public comment period, Mr. Town Manager, did any other resident or guests?
No, that, 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 that's all.
Okay, thank you. So now the public comment period shall, is completed and the record closed. Now the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions, and I will turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I I pretty strictly appreciate the Rebecca and Daniel's efforts to maintain the character of the house and the character of the woods. I recognize this is a, this appears to be a project that has grown over time to make their house what they want. And Kabir, I appreciate your comment about you know, the focus of this or the impetus for this particular agenda topic is the tree removals in accordance with our, our new town code on tree removals. That said, my, and, and I appreciate the efforts of the residents and their team to address neighbors' concerns. My, my one outstanding concern is this is really runoff erosion from the site during construction. And I'm, I'm concerned that the the applicant's estimated disturbance is often close to that 100 square yard threshold. And yeah, so, so that, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. We can go around in, in another order. Robin, what are some of your thoughts, questions?
All right, I'll proceed the move. What I understand is the reason for doing what they're doing and then try to come up with conditions that might satisfy concerns. This has got nothing to do with really the adding the second floor to, to the house. This arose as a part of that project, but it is obviously a major threat to the house itself. If the hill behind the house collapses, then the foundations of the house will be seriously imperiled and it's a major threat. So the three retaining walls that are going in are to protect the house. They are to hold the hill in place. And there's serious efforts to compact the soils now in front of the retaining walls, which gets at the issue that the soil was only loosely placed there by the original builders. What is unfortunate and, and, and Daniel and Rebecca themselves see this as unfortunate is because of those retaining walls, it will damage the roots of the tulip poplar trees, particularly on the black gum tree that are both on their yard and also in public land below them to the extent that those trees will not survive and therefore they need to be removed. I think that absolutely justifies the tree removals. In other words, it's an essential tree removal to preserve the house. In this case, they are essential tree removals to preserve the house. And I don't have a concern on that basis. However, the, clearly the construction itself is of concern to the Laskys. And so I, I think that landscape architect and the builder has been very accommodating, and I really want to go, yes, that one condition needs to be that the fact that the wall should be six feet, not four feet. We need to have a condition that no heavy equipment be parked on the driveway as well. We need also to have Mr. Lohmeyer resolved with the landscape architect to the extent that either Mr. Lohmeyer is satisfied that in fact, they are disturbing under 100 cubic yards of soil or alternatively, the architect is satisfied that it's over 100. And in that latter case, if it is over 100, then a Montgomery County permit will be required. So those are the conditions that I see will be necessary.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Robin. Kabir?
Yeah, you know, this is a tree removal application. And we have a set of factors defined in our new code. And when I look at those factors, based on the discussion we've had, turns out that we are, there are a number of sort of mitigating factors in favor of removal. Number one being that, you know, that we would not be able to, they would not be able to achieve the retaining wall development without the removal of the trees, which we've already established they need to do for pretty critical reasons, given the historic nature of how that soil was treated. And they are proposing to replant canopy trees, native trees, as well as do stormwater drainage and rain garden related measures as part of their landscape plan. So these are, they're more conditioned in favor of approving removal as per our new code than against. So I'm in favor of approving this. I think in terms of the other points that were brought up, I think they would probably be discussed at the building permit application, specifically if no variance, additional variances are required, but we would have the opportunity to provide conditions, then I suspect when we see the building permit application. But in terms of tree removal, in terms of our updated code, it seems that there are more factors in favor of approving the removal.
Thank you very much, Kabir. Shannon?
Um, so I just think that I, like, it just makes me a little weary and obviously this is about the tree removal. So, you know, that's kind of a separated part, but not going through Montgomery County sediment control on this and, you know, or at least like reaching out to them, like I've been reaching out to them for some projects like I'm trying to do in my yard right now, and they actually are emailing back rather quickly. You know, I might just recommend that it just goes through there just because it's so close to Little Falls branch and you know, with the question of whether or not it's like 99 cubic feet or 100 cubic feet or whatever, you know, it might be a good idea just to, um, to just check back with them and just make sure that there's nothing that is going to be messing up like anything. I don't, I don't know what could happen, but I, I just, it would make me weary that, um, you know, it seems so close and I would probably try to engage them. As we've seen, they approve everything, so it, it should be fine. And it's not a question probably of whether or not they would not approve this. It just would make, you know, perhaps me or, or others feel, um, feel like, you know, that we're, that it's not going to be disrupting anything as far as like the little falls and, and the sediment pollution. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you, Shannon. That's a great question. Ron? Does the town council have the authority to require that the applicants secure a county sediment control permit?
Not exactly, no. The, the town can't compel the county to undertake that analysis, but what, one option would be the town council could condition approval on confirmation from the county as to whether or not a sediment control permit is required by the county. And if the county concludes it is required, then you know, the county would require that. Otherwise, you know, the, the town manager could accept an email from Department of Permitting Services confirming that sediment control permit is not required.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Did, does that response, does anybody have any other questions or comments? From the council?
Well, I mean, I'll just say in response to Kabir, I think we do need to establish conditions tonight because the retaining walls are a function of the tree removals. In other words, they are related to the tree removals, so not related to the building, the, the structure. So we need to incorporate conditions with approving the tree removals.
Right, yeah. A building permit is requested tonight for the retaining walls as well as the tree removals.
All right, so.
This is why I, I was asking earlier, what are we looking at? Are we looking at the tree removal or the building permit or both?
It's, it's all of it.
But not, not a permit for an addition, just a building permit for the retaining walls.
So, so the, and these are linked but separate approvals. The agenda only lists tree approval. Just to be 100% clear.
No, it has building permit.
It has?
Yeah.
It says.
Building permanent tree removal application, it says.
Okay, okay, great. I was looking at the next one.
It gets a little confusing.
But it, but in all honesty, the, the, I think the agenda items should have said building permit for retaining. I think that is confusing.
So this condition would apply to the retaining wall building permit? Correct, Ron?
Correct.
Okay.
So is anyone prepared to make a motion, given all that information?
Yeah, I, I will try.
I'll take your role.
Okay, motion to approve the building permit and tree removal application submitted by Daniel Brenner Wurtig and Rebecca La Madrid for the construction of retaining wall and removal of up to five trees located on the property at 5613 Warwick Place with the following conditions. One, that a six foot wall be created between 5611 and 5613 to protect the air conditioners, 5611 and the windows, 5611.
Wall or, or fence?
Fence, fence. Two, that no heavy equipment be placed on the driveway of the property.
Robin, how are we going to enforce that?
We, we have inspections that happen.
And that will be part of the parking plan that is approved as part of a condition of the permit. The parking plan specifies where construction parking can take place, where equipment can be stored.
The parking plan that's been submitted already.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll change after Shannon's comment to three, that the Montgomery County Permitting Service be consulted on whether a soil, uh, small soil removal permit is required.
Yeah, the county sediment control permit. I think that's what you're referring to.
All right, sediment control permit.
Thank you.
That's the motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, and, and that the reforestation plan recommended.
You're right, and, and the, the, and that the reforestation plan is carried out with the conditions in the new code, which require whole water replacement of the trees over the following two years.
Okay, but before council member Rebecca seconds, because I saw her first, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor. I believe that resolves all of the concerns addressed by the Laskys. Two other notes I added, but maybe they're not necessary to be included in the motion. That the grade not change at the shared property line and that the trees be removed by hand or, and, and or with a mini skip loader if needed.
Well, perhaps the council, the maker of the measure wants to add that.
Well, I see no harm in adding it. The, the four foot to six feet was a change during the meeting, so that's why that's in there. The, the sediment control thing is changed during meeting, which is why that's in there. The, the hat, the parking plan does not include at the moment a statement that only small vehicles will be on the driveway. So that's why that's in there. But I do believe the intent to use equipment by hand and small equipment only is in there.
Is already there, okay.
So is that, are you satisfied, Mr. Town Attorney and Councilor Ball?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so and Councilor Rebecca, is that what you wanted to second? Okay, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much and congratulations to the applicants. The next item, public hearing motion to approve of a shredding event for town residents at the town hall parking lot on Saturday, June 18, performed by Shred Instead, as recommended by the Town Environment Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Sorry. This event was planned and recommended by the Town Environment Committee, I think, back in 2020. Back in two thousand twenty, um, this was. I'll take a step back. For a few years, this was, this was an event that the town had sanctioned that a private resident had, had done. Um, and starting in two thousand twenty, it came before the town council and the town council at that time. Uh, requested that, um, it go through the environment committee in, in part because the environment committee had some ideas on. On ways that they can turn it into more of an environmental event, um, handing out. New, uh, batteries and, or, uh, recycling batteries and, oh, uh, replacing LED light bulbs and, and. Things, things like that, um, so, uh. Last year, I, I think was the first year that that was worked out, um. As far as the feedback that I received, it was successful and, and, um. I think people, people, people enjoyed it, um, the only thing was the traffic, uh.
It was too successful.
Yeah, the traffic was, um, a bit crazy as I understand, um. So, uh, just one.
Don't forget to address the, the fact that this is a waiver of our give policy.
Yeah, uh, yeah, um, just taking a step back, Mister Mayor, I, I just wanted to note that we, uh, we skipped over. Tree removal application for forty seven oh nine Trent Court. I don't know if you wanted to. Do that before we, before we do this.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, why, since we've gotten into it, why don't we, um?
Okay, I'll try, I'll try to, I'll try to be quick, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I, I should have noticed that, um, at, at the start, um. Uh, the, the details are there, are there for you, I think, um, I, so I, I won't, I won't belabor the point, um, but. To Mayor Slavin's earlier point, the shredding company has historically. Worked it out with the town resident as opposed to. Having the town as an, act as an intermediary, and so that's the request again that the town resident be able to. Pay for the shred, uh, the shredding company, and so it, it. In some ways functions as a, as a gift to the, to the town.
But you've also vetted the company to make sure that they're, uh, licensed and insured and all that other stuff.
Yes, I, I've, I've asked for their information, that's been given to me, um, they, they satisfy all the requirements of. The town code in terms of, um. Their business practices and licenses that they need to receive and all that.
Okay, thank you, Council President Sirko, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
Yeah, just a little question, Matt, in fact, the event's been going on for. Several years, four or five years at least, always knew last year for the first time was the involvement of the. Montgomery County Department of Environmental Protection on the swapping off LED bulbs for old bulbs. Uh, and they're coming back this year, they're gonna do the same this year.
Yeah, thank you, that clarifying.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
No, I, I think this is a good event. I was one of the people directing traffic last year. But I think it had, um, it was nice to see. You know, an event that brings the town together.
Thank you, Councilor Rebec, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mister Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents, I guess?
No, no, no comments submitted, um, and nobody, nobody here wishing to make a comment tonight.
Okay, thank you, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Sure, um, I move that we approve a shredding event for town residents at town hall. Parking lot on Saturday, June eighteenth, performed by shred instead, as recommended by the town environment committee.
Is there a second? I saw Bar first, is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. Next item, I'm sorry, going back to, uh, public hearing motion to consider approval of a tree removal application. Submitted by Joyce Somsack and Donald Rosen for the removal of the following trees. From the property located forty seven oh nine Trent Court in two Norway spruces, Mister. Mister, um, town, uh, arborist.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, you can see in the pictures, both of these trees are. Leaning toward the driveway in the house, there are two spruce trees, one sixteen inch and one thirteen. Um, that's, um. Triggered the hearing before the council because the addition of the two trees is above twenty four inches. Diameter, um, I'm not proposing any, uh. Reforestation, uh, mainly because these are both pretty hazardous. And there's also a spruce behind these two that are kind of fill in that space. After these two are removed. And, uh, that concludes my, uh, report.
Okay, thank you, Council President Sirko, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions, I saw the pictures, I'd want the trees out of there pretty fast.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar. No questions. Thank you, Councilor Rebec.
No questions.
Thank you, Mister Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mister Mayor.
Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I move we approve a tree removal application submitted by Joyce Somsack and Donald Rosen. Remove the following trees from the property, from the trees listed from the property located at forty seven oh nine Trent Court.
Thank you, is there a second? I saw Councilman Bar first, is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. The next item is, um, a, this is a reprogramming request. Of thirty one thousand dollars in next year's budget. Regarding town pool renovation, and I will turn it over to the town manager.
Yeah, uh, I, I had mentioned this previously, and I think we, um. As the evening was, was getting late, uh, we, we decided to punt on this, um, at the budget, so. I have, I, I, I wrote the memo for you, um. I, I apologize, I think my original draft had, had the wrong numbers, uh, for you, but, uh, as Mayor Slavin indicated. Next year thirty one thousand. Dollars, um. You might recall that we had anticipated about a, a ten percent savings by. Doing all of the work all at once, um, and because of inflation and, and materials. That ten percent savings essentially got, got eaten up, so we're back to kind of where we originally were, um, so that's. That's it, the, uh. The, uh, as Mayor Slavin said, you know, uh, we need to find, we need thirty one thousand dollars, um. Transferred to the pool deck repairs line in the budget.
And what's your recommendation?
Uh, sorry, um. My recommendation would be at this point, um. I, I spoke, unfortunately, the, the whole, uh, budget committee didn't get to, to meet on it, but I, I talked with the budget committee chair. Ann Bolton and, um. One, one easy, easy way is to transfer from the stormwater renovation line. Um, and as we get tangible plans associated with that, we can do, uh, uh. Another transfer to that line if necessary.
Okay, thank you, Council President Sirko, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no questions, Matt, thank you, I would call us discussing it initially, we just didn't quite get to adding it into the budget.
Thank you, Councilor Bar, you have any?
Yeah, I think the optics of taking money from stormwater renovation for pool, uh, stormwater mitigation for pool renovation are bad. Um, it, it's, in other words, people's, people's basements are being flooded and we're taking that money away to, to. Pretty up the pool, uh, you know, so I think the best thing to do is to take the money from the unencumbered reserves at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kumar.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to proceed on this with the full recommendation from the budget committee.
There is no.
So you wanna, so you wanna wait until they're. So you went away to the budget committee and made some next recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rebec, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mister Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mister Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Make the motion. Discuss it a little bit first.
Okay, go for it.
Just 'cause I, I've, I've heard, uh. Different options or perspectives on where the money should come from. I guess the, the first comment I'd like to make is. Um, there's. My, my takeaway is that we are, we have full consensus. On the need to add thirty one thousand dollars. For the pool renovation to get this job done, it's, the question is. In our budget, where do we take that money from? And. Robin, um. Expressed hesitancy to, or disagreement to follow the town manager's recommendation to transfer from the. Uh, stormwater fund. And, um, Kabir. Expressed desire to wait until we get the full budget committee recommendation. My, my thought, and then we can go around is. To just, um. Take the money for now from the unencumbered reserves. That allows the town manager to proceed with planning to get this renovation done. And then, I, I agree, we should get some recommendations from the, uh, budget committee, and if we need to. Shift money from another line. Back into the unencumbered reserve, uh, we, we can certainly do so. But. I'm all for just taking, shifting the money from unencumbered reserves. Uh, Shannon, uh, you didn't have any questions or comments there, do you have any thoughts here?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that. I, either I agree like, you know, about looking at where the budget committee thinks it should come from, or I think that I agree with you where. We should just take it from the general pot, like I don't think we have to go by and do line by line to take it from stormwater committee versus anywhere else, I mean. You know, if we have the reserves, then let's just take it from there, and then we can funnel back money as needed to that.
Kabir, would, would that be acceptable to you?
I vehemently agree with this, and I, I'm deeply upset with how you're managing this, Steve, I just wanted to let you know that.
Sorry, you agree or no, you're very upset, what, what's wrong?
Both of those things, I think you heard me clearly. I do not agree with this process, I'm not in favor of this, we ran a budget process, it started with reserve targets. This is not a game. This is significant in a serious issue. On how we run our money and how we manage the town. This is why I'm suggesting we follow process, we get recommendation from the budget committee, since this requires. That thought process on it, and then we come back and we decide, we cannot just keep moving money around. Based on our political interests and desires, doesn't work like that.
Of course, it doesn't work like that, wasn't.
I'm glad you understood that.
Um. I just, I hadn't quite understood, uh. Thank you for clarifying your position, um. Robin, do you have any further thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I mean, we, we gotta get this done, you know, uh, and so the easiest way is to take the money from unencumbered reserves, and then we'll find out. What other money we can put into unencumbered reserves as the year goes on. Um, and it could well be from stormwater if the stormwater, uh, doesn't require three hundred thousand dollars. But we can't decide that just now, because we. What, what projects are gonna happen?
Excuse me, Kabir, Robin is speaking.
Just to be a hundred percent clear, the stormwater budgeting was a sham. And I don't want to revisit that here, because I don't think all of you agree with that. But I do think when it comes to deciding something like this, especially if all of you are suggesting unencumbered reserves. Which was the starting point, the goals on the unencumbered reserves was a starting point for the budget process, I would like to hear from the budget committee. And I think that is respectful of the process, respectful of the tax dollars, respectful for what the town expects from us as volunteers. And I think the budget committee can meet and do it in a timely manner, this time is an artificial pressure that you're putting on this.
Okay, um. In this discussion, we're allowed to ask, uh, the, the town manager if, if there's a timeline here. Uh, I guess so, I'll ask you, Matt, when do you need to know about this funding in order to proceed with. Planning for the pool renovation?
I don't, I don't have a specific date necessarily, um, but the message that I got from American Pool was. We'd like for you to sign the agreement so that we can get you on our schedule for fall work. Um, now, I mean, if the count. Yeah, uh.
I, I don't think it's a problem.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable signing off on a project that. We don't, we don't have the money budgeted for, I guess, is, so that's why I, that's why I wanted it. Before the council, that's why, you know, that's why it was part, it, it was one of the recommendations during the budget session as well.
Okay, I would like, I would like, given the fact that one council member is not here tonight, I would like to make a suggestion that. That this be tabled until the June twenty first, um. Work session, the fir, the beginning of the work session could be a council meeting, that would give the budget committee an opportunity to meet. And make an official recommendation on this.
Great, thank you very much, Mister Mayor, I think that's a good idea.
So I think someone should make a motion to table this item to, uh, June twen. I believe the work session is on June twenty first.
I have that as like a building code meeting. Is that the work session?
I think it was switched.
Oh, with Monday, the twenty seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
The work session is on the twenty first.
Alright.
So, uh, would someone like to make a motion to table this item?
I'll, I'll do that, I move that we table this budget item for two town pool renovation. Until our council work session on June twenty first, to give time for the budget committee. To consider and make a recommendation.
Before we go ahead with that, could I just say with Matt, does that timing work with the contract, signing the contract?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, okay, go ahead, Councilor Bar.
Question, Matt, does that timing work for signing the contract with American Pool?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much, okay. Now we have the town manager's report, and before, uh, the report, I would. There, uh, a council member contacted me, uh. Requesting that we, um, go into executive session to discuss a legal matter. So we, Councilor Rebec, like to make that motion that we go into executive session.
Yes, I, I moved that we go into an executive decision, session.
Okay, and council member, can, the town attorney can make a, can make a, um. Can give you the language.
Right, so you have to give the reason we're going into.
Is this, is this for an enforcement matter?
Yes.
Okay, so to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, namely. Enforcement of the town code. Pursued to general provisions article three three oh five B seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Uh, all this, okay, we will now go into executive session, and the town manager will. Put anyone, any resident or guests in holding room, is that correct?
Yep, uh, one moment.
Okay, go ahead and.
Well, I move we return to exit the session.
All those in favor, thank you very much, we'll see you in a minute.
Okay, we just have one, one guest join, yeah, so one, one person who had the patience to stick around.
Which I'm sure was counsel, Mister Chairman. Which I'm sure was counsel, Mr. Chairman, that's one, incorrect.
Yes, you are.
Yes, of course.
Um, uh, yeah, I I know it's getting late, and so we spent more time on that than than we anticipated. I I had the writ, my written report for you all, so I'm happy to take any questions on that uh either tonight or or offline. The only thing that I'll add that I don't think I could on there is we received a a, an inquiry from the uh, is it Park Somerset? Is that the name of the apartment building there? Um, they were concerned about some erosion in the Little Falls Creek um, past, past the pool, kind of going towards River Road. And I I met with somebody from uh Montgomery County, and I I talked to somebody from uh the state environment department. And they brought out some maps actually, and and were very helpful, and the good news is that they did not see any significant erosion um, from between now and I think they compared it to something like fifteen years ago. Um, the Park Somerset building is very, very, it 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 is essentially built right up to the property line there. Um, my my understanding is that when this was built in the seventies, if it if it were to be built today, that would not be approved um, because of A, how close it is to the property line, and B, how close it is to the creek. Um, but in any case, good news is there's not significant erosion there. However, um they did recommend some small projects that we might do to help to help stabilize the bank, namely planting some trees, basically, that in the roots, the roots will grab on to the soil um and help stabilize the soil. More significant work like armoring, um, that would that would eat into all of our ARPA money. I mean, that that uh, the the estimates I've heard are that would be hundreds of thousands, if not into millions of dollars, and probably a a five to ten year project that would have to go through the Army Corps of Engineers and a- all sorts of hoops, so um, we, we've avoided to this point uh anything significant like that, but I I I think it's prudent for us to be proactive, and I've talked its whole word about um, yeah, that sort, that mini project to help stave off that that larger, larger uh larger reconstruction that that may have to occur sometime in the future. But other, other than that, I I think I I tried to hit some of the big points in in my report, so I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, like I said, either tonight or offline.
Well, given the late hour, do you, what is, what's the council's pleasure? Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's time to adjourn. I move we adjourn.
Okay, okay, and anyone that has questions of Matt, okay, excellent meeting, everyone. See you on on um June twenty, June twenty-first.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, take care, everybody. Thank you.
Take care.
Good night, everyone. Good night.